Good evening and welcome to the Pittsburgh City Council Meeting Committee on Hearings. We have an interview for an appointment and Madam Clerk, will you read the purpose?
Bill 13, Resolution Appointing Jake Pollak as a Director of the Office of Management and Budget.
Thank you, and I want to say first of all that we are joined by Councilman Reverend Ricky Burgess, Councilwoman Lavelle, Councilwoman Gross, Councilwoman Erica Strasburger. Do we have anyone else? Do you see Madam Clerk? That's it for now, and that's it for now, and I want to welcome Jake Pollak to the table for City Council. You've had a very rough start here with the snow, and I just want to personally, before we begin this, I want to personally thank you for responding. I know you've had a lot of phone calls from a lot of members and a lot of text messages and everything and emails regarding snow removal, and I just want to thank you for promptly answering and giving members updates constantly throughout the storm. So I want to thank you. I think that was really helpful in your response. With that said, I'm going to turn it over to you first to see if there's anything you'd like to say, and then we're going to turn it over to council members, starting with Councilwoman Burgess.
Sure. Thank you very much, Council President Kell Smith, and to members of council for convening today's hearing, and thank you, Councilwoman, for your kind words regarding the administration's efforts around snow removal. I'm very excited to be here today and to continue a discussion that we really initiated this morning in standing committee, so I don't want to rehash too much of what was said then other than to say that again, I'm, you know, as a lifelong Pittsburgher, deeply proud and honored to have been nominated by Mary Gani to serve as Director of Management and Budget. In response to some questions that Reverend Burgess raised at the table this morning, I have prepared a very brief presentation, but I'm happy to, depending on the pleasure of council, show those slides first or wait and do so in response to questioning. But otherwise, again, very happy to be here.
Yes, please take the time and do what you feel comfortable doing. If you want to have a presentation, we'd love to see it.
Sure, and it's will be very quick and hopefully it will just address some of the questions that members raised. So, and this was provided to council a few hours ago. If you haven't had a chance to see it, it's just a couple of quick organizational charts that speak to some of the questions that Reverend Burgess raised, the proposed executive branch structure of the Gani administration. First, I'll start with the Office of Management and Budget. This is the larger of the two changes, I think would be fair to characterize it. And again, this was discussed legislatively today as it relates to the code and will be discussed further in the next couple of standing committee meetings as it relates to a couple of small budgetary adjustments necessary to effectuate this. But as you see here, this slide shows the Office of Management and Budget divided now into two divisions, one division of budget, which will be headed by Deputy Director. Of course, that position has not yet been budgeted and thus is not currently filled. But we would envision, we are proposing, I should say, the addition of that position in order to put someone there to oversee the scope of work that falls within the office's remit currently, which is, of course, the CDBG team, the capital fleet and asset management team, the operating grants and special revenues team, and the procurement team. I'll also note here that the Assistant Director of CDBG is also a budgeted position and currently unfilled. That the creation of that position was approved in the 2022 operating budget. We have, we hope to be posting it soon and conducting the hiring process there, but you'll see that at the moment that position is not filled. And so Assistant Director Hutchinson is overseeing that team for the time being. In general, I'll just say that in the short time that I've been in this position in a designated status, I've been extremely grateful to the three current Assistant Directors for their hard work in helping me get up to speed and in managing these processes during this transitionary period. And I have great confidence, not only in them, but in the entire staff of OMB who I'm a pleasure to work with, and I'm looking forward to both becoming a more complete part of that team and in building out some of these other staffing positions. The other new piece, excuse me, of the puzzle here would be the creation of a division of management, as we discussed this morning. We did not anticipate a Deputy Director of Management because really that division would have two heads. The Chief Operations and Administrative Officer, which is a position currently occupied by Lisa Frank, who came in with the Gani administration on day one, and a planning and development team that would be headed by the Chief Economic Development Officer. That position is not presently filled, but we expect to be making an announcement on that in short order and look forward to an opportunity to introduce our selection there to council. At present, those two positions are situated within the mayor's office, so this is simply moving them into this new structure. In our budget amendment, we are proposing some small changes to the support staff within the department to ensure that they have adequate administrative support. But I would describe, as I think I said earlier today, in a response to a question from councilperson Strasburger, this as a perhaps one might call it a pilot phase of this management structure, you know, really more focused on adding a few supports, but mostly reorganizing existing pieces on the board with an eye toward potential future expansion as we work through that process and see what we believe to be significant benefits to it. So this covers our proposed adjustments to the structure of OMB. Reverend Burgess also asked about how this will implicate the organizational structure of the city overall. And while I know we are due to provide a official organizational chart to council as part of the budget amendment process and included in the budget document, this is a, I guess, what I would call a simplified version of that for the purposes simply of illustrating today's conversation. And what I'd like to point out here, just to underscore a point that I made this morning, is that as required by code and, you know, as has long been the practice in city government, for chain of command purposes, you know, the heads of major administrative units, department directors, will still continue to report directly to the mayor as they always have. In the past, of course, different mayor's offices have structured the delegation of responsibility on a day-to-day basis differently. You know, many members of council are familiar with an orientation, which the mayor's chief of staff handled a lot of those day-to-day managerial functions. We're simply reallocating that and putting maybe some additional organizational energy into those tasks. So you should think of the Chief Operating and Administrative Officer and the Chief Economic Development Officer, even though they would be located within OMB to improve coordination across the work of that office, as continuing to serve a function which they have in the previous administration, coordinating and facilitating communication between departments on an interdepartmental and interdisciplinary basis and serving, you know, in a day-to-day sense perhaps as the mayor's proxy, but not in any way removing the direct line of communication between the mayor and the directors of the various departments. So I just want to make that part clear because I think, you know, hopefully this illustrates that in a clearer way than perhaps had been understood before. That being said, you know, we intend, as I said, on a functional basis to give you up responsibilities within the Division of Management along the lines of what the titles imply, you know, those departments that have a primary, primarily operating function, DPW, DOMI, et cetera, will be, you know, working closely with the Chief Operating and Administrative Officer to facilitate process improvement on behalf of the mayor. And those that serve a planning and development function, like the Department of City Planning, like coordination with some outside agencies or quasi-governmental agencies like the URA, will be more in the portfolio of the Chief Economic Development Officer. There are some cross-cutting functions, you know, there are aspects of the work of DOMI that are primarily operating and others that are more related to development review. The same could be said for PLI, you know, and I'm just listing those as examples. Of course, you know, in those areas, they'll be working with both teams to ensure to sort of effective departmental coordination. So with that, I'm more than happy to take any further questions, of course, but I just wanted to quickly summarize those responses to Reverend Burgess's questions. And I'll leave the slides up momentarily in case any of the initial questions, they've been made helpful visual before taking them down.
Okay, thank you very much, and I'll begin. Reverend Burgess, do you want to start? Do you want to? Councilwoman Lavelle?
Well, first and foremost, thank you, Jake, for providing this information. It's very, very helpful. Quick question, what are the, in the executive office of the mayor, what are the positions that will be there?
Sure, so that is something that the mayor's office team is evaluating presently. I mean, obviously, there are a number of positions that have traditionally been there, you know, the executive assistants to the mayor, the chief of staff and assistant chief of staff, of course, the communications team, the office of equity. I didn't show it on this slide, but those positions, you know, fall within that kind of space as well. As is traditional, you know, there is discussion within the team about adjusting some of those positions, and we'll certainly come to council if any of that has a budgetary application that would require amendment. That's an ongoing process at this time. But the positions, the only position for me, let me maybe say this in a way that makes it simpler. The only positions that we are moving that are presently in the mayor's office or had been in the mayor's office in the previous administration are the COAO and the CDO.
And you mentioned the Office of Equity. Are you maintaining the Office of Equity?
Certainly the functional areas that are in that office, absolutely. Again, you know, there, we're also exploring options for reconfiguring some of that work. I think, you know, one of the lessons that was discovered during the transition process that it was that while there was a lot of great work being accomplished there, some of it was siloed from better connections to departments. So again, we're just going through an evaluation process there about how to best organize that work. But yes, the work itself is of course critical and equity is, you know, and continuing the progress the city is making on equity is a top priority for the Gani administration.
Okay, thank you very much. I think those are all the questions I have as it relates to you specifically, since that's technically why we're here. I just want to say that I believe you certainly come, have the background experience. We're working with you at both at URA and PWSA, and so I certainly wish you all the best to the extent that I can be helpful and this council can be helpful to you. I think we all want to do that, and we want to work collaboratively with you, and I'll forward to it. So congratulations.
Thank you very much, Councilman. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Councilman, and Councilman Kraus, do you have any questions?
I do. Am I up already?
Yes, do you mind?
No, 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 I apologize for being a little bit late to the table. Hi, Jake, again, thank you for being here. My eyes are not as good as they used to be, and the breakdown on the flow chart between management and budget is in here?
Yes.
Okay.
And then I can put it on the screen too, that there are two flow charts, one about the overall structure of the executive branch and one specific to OMB. I'm happy to speak to either.
Okay. Okay, so we, and please correct me if I'm wrong, we created additional positions to be able to create this division in the departments. Could you speak a little bit about? Well, let me, let me put it this way. You and I, we go way back. We have a great history. We've known one another, I want to say since 2009. So I have a tremendous amount of respect for you and for your capacity and your capabilities, and I'm, you know, infinitely comforted that you have joined this administration, especially in the position that you are going to be in. And I think all members would agree that this past week, the really the first two weeks of the new administration coming in, you have stepped up to show that that you are more than willing to share that capacity that you have with us. So I want to thank you for that. When you, when you, how do you see your role as the director in terms of overseeing the Department of Management and the Department of Budget? Do you see yourself taking a day-to-day role in each of them? I know we've created new positions to lead each of the departments. Is your role going to be more of an oversight of the new positions that we've created? Could you kind of give us a sense of how you see it operating?
Sure, I'd be happy to do that. I should just clarify because the legislative process here is, of course, you know, there are multiple pieces of legislation. So I should just note that earlier today, council preliminarily approved a broad code text change to broaden the scope of responsibility of the Office of Management and Budget. There are still two budgetary amendments pending before council. I believe they're being held for a public hearing as part of the standard process. So no new positions have been created yet. That, of course, is a question for council still to tackle. But the administration has proposed the creation of three new positions to our support staff, administrative assistants, to just support the, some of the reorganization here. The more significant change is the creation of a Deputy Director of Budget. The Deputy Director of Budget's role and responsibility would be to manage and coordinate the work of the existing Assistant Directors within the, or Assistant Director positions within the, the office has currently constituted. There are three to date, capital fleet and asset management, operating grants and special revenues and procurement. And then there is a fourth position that was authorized in last year's budget, has not yet been posted, but we intend to proceed to hiring with soon, that would manage the CDBG team. So, you know, I would imagine that some of what have historically been the day-to-day responsibilities of the director would pass to that deputy in terms of, you know, direct management of some of the teams, taking on some of those projects, process, process flow, that I would imagine as being close collaborators and partners in, and would, you know, would fully intend to still maintain some, you know, direct day-to-day oversight of the fiscal affairs and the budgetary process. But certainly from a, the perspective of a manager, not, not as, you know, a deep technical expert. Again, I believe I have strong qualifications in public finance broadly, but there are areas of specific technical expertise that are plentiful within the department, within the office, excuse me. And it would be a question of managing those technicians and experts to achieve the results that the mayor and the city are looking for rather than, you know, doing financial forecasting myself certainly. The other two major changes here are not creating new positions, but just the relocation of them from one functional group or in the budget to another. The positions of Chief Operating and Administrative Officer and the positions of Chief, and the position of Chief Economic Development Officer. Those two positions are presently budgeted, they're budgeted in the office of the mayor. Under this proposal, they would move into and would sort of co-lead a division of management. It would not have extensive staff, at least that's not what we're proposing at this time. As I mentioned this morning, that may be something that we would look to discuss with council in the future if this model proves as beneficial as we think it could be. But at the present moment, our intention there is to have them continue to function as they are now, which is as coordinators and collaborators with department heads to ensure strong cross-departmental and interdisciplinary coordination on behalf of, you know, the mayor's leadership. I would therefore say that the core leadership team in OMB would be constituted by the Deputy Director of Budget, the COAO, the CDO, and led by myself. So if that maybe helps you understand both what we're proposing from a structural point of view and the role I would play in it, I hope that's helpful. And I think if I, if I'm, I don't mean to get ahead of your line of questioning, Councilman, but I think a point that I made earlier, but I'll recap as I know some additional members between the room, the way we anticipate that functioning within the executive branch broadly is reflected on the second slide, which I just showed to underscore and prevent any misconception that this change would cut off the direct line of communication that exists presently between department heads and the mayor. That's not the case, but as has been true in most administrations in the past, you know, the mayor has, on a day-to-day basis and to varying degrees, sort of delegated as proxy for himself or herself some level of management and supervision and decision-making about departmental level activities to other members of his team. But, but of course, from a chain of command perspective, the, the, the department heads would continue to report directly to and have their communication with the mayor. And I think if you asked, I can't say all, we've only been up in office two weeks, and there have been some pressing matters in public safety and public works that have probably led to a greater degree of time spent together there. But certainly if you ask the acting directors of those departments, I think you'd find that the mayor is very directly engaged with them on a regular basis.
So, thank you for that. So not to oversimplify the role of the council, but our role's fiduciary in nature. Councilman Burgess and I, being here 15 years, our 15th year of being here, we have seen the highs and the lows, the good, the bad. We've seen the city on the brink of bankruptcy. We've seen the city go under state oversight. We were present when we could possibly have lost our city pension, that the pension could have been overtaken by the state, and we have made it our, I would argue, our primary goal, really, to be the finances of the city. And it was our primary goal, absolutely, the finances of the city, writing the mistakes of the past, saying no to a whole lot of things, a whole bunch of times because of our desire to write the finances, become fiscally responsible, legislated any number of different procedures that are codified by which we must abide, to have certain amounts of money set aside, to have five-year plans in place, to have capital budgets done in specific ways. And a five-year plan that we, we know at least in, you know, in light of the global pandemic and COVID, that for this year in time and next year in time, '23, we appear to be okay. After that, it's pretty much, it could be anyone's guess as to where we could go and, and our desire to see our finances laid out in five-year increments, to understand well ahead of time of what is expected of us and, and barring any unforeseen, you know, outside forces, what our budgets are going to look like. So I believe, and I don't want to speak for everybody, but I believe it's a very strong desire of this council to work with you very, very closely on budgetary matters, the finances of the city, and to make certain that we exercise our fiscal duty, our responsibility to manage our finances to the highest and best order and to make certain that we never, ever, God forbid, find ourselves in a place where we could be facing bankruptcy, a horrible bond rating, our inability to borrow, and the possibility of losing pensions for hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of city employees. So we, I say that to say we'd like to work very closely with you on these matters, and we would appreciate your willingness to do so so that we can, we can continue to, to keep to the commitments that we have made in terms of fiscal responsibility and financial stability. And if you'd like to speak on that in some way, I'd invite you to do so.
Sure, absolutely. Thank you for that, that, that question and that line of observation, Councilman. And I would say that both I and Mayor, speaking on behalf of Mayor Gani, fully agree that, you know, preserving a commitment to a stable, transparent, and fiscally sound budgetary process that has to remain a top priority would under any circumstances, but particularly in the context of the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic and the degree to which that has impacted or at least produced uncertainty around certain revenues. You know, now is not the time to make any major changes to those processes or practices that you articulated, nor again, are we contemplating them at any point in the future. But just to draw a very, maybe to double underline that it would be, you know, problematic at this time. I'm happy to report, and I know all of you know this, but for the benefit of the public, you know, that, as you said, Councilman, the financial footing of the city is strong. The bond rating has been on a continual positive trajectory over the last several years. That is owed to prudent management by this council and then previous administrations to ensure that that's been the case. You know, the projected revenues are strong, the projected net operating results at the end of this year, presuming we remain on budget, and revenues perform as expected, you know, would be in just shy of $20 million, which is, again, are all good signs that, that that planning process and the care and focus that council has shown to those over the past few years has paid off. So again, I think some of the things that we may look to do in consultation with council, in which I should say the, the existing staff in OMB are very interested and eager and excited about, is improving upon our, you know, our, and when I say our, I mean the administration's processes in producing its proposed budget and adding new and improved tools and feedback methods for the public to propose to us their ideas. Obviously, those then have to be filtered through the exact same screens for fiscal feasibility that you've mentioned, Councilman, before proposing that to council before, so that council can do its due diligence and of course, its charter-protected role in being the final arbiter of those questions.
Even with the, the tenacious nature of the council to manage the finances of the city, who could have predicted a global pandemic that after all the work that we had done for so many years, were faced with the possibility of laying off as many as 600 public safety workers? It was a staggering wake-up call to this council of, even under the best of commitments to fiscal responsibility and financial stability, outside forces can, can play havoc with it, and we need to be prepared. We need to have the rainy day fund, if you will, and responsible fiscal policy, consistent responsible fiscal policy that keeps us one step ahead of what could possibly, what the future could possibly bring to us. We have great leadership on the council. We have Councilman Lavelle's, our finance chair, who's elected to a second term, who's doing a great job. Councilman Burgess is our Deputy, Deputy Mayor, I almost said. As our president pro tempore, Councilwoman Kell Smith is our president. And, and I, you know, I appreciate your commitment and your willingness to work closely with us on matters of finance and fiscal responsibility. It truly is without, without that, that firm foundation, all is for naught. We can ask for all kinds of things that we want to see happening within our council districts. And if there ain't money in the bank, we ain't going to be able to do it. So on to the next subject, could you please speak a little bit to your understanding of the Department of Operations and Administration that Lisa Frank will, has been appointed, I believe, to lead, just sort of your interpretation of the day-to-day responsibilities? She will be under the Division of Management, and as we spoke a little bit earlier today, council's desire to see, follow through, through on code and ordinance enforcement and things that we take very seriously, that we labor about at the table and ultimately pass and then hand off to administrators to implement. So Lisa will have a very important role in the administration, and I was just curious as to what your thoughts or interpretation would be of that role and her responsibilities.
Yeah, I thank you for that question, Councilman. I mean, I think that the, the key objective within this framework for us is performance improvement and utilizing both frankly of those, those two positions within the Division of Management as being leaders, working closely with folks in the departmental level. There's certainly also a very strong and capable team within OMB that can assist in process improvement on the financial end and within IMP on the sort of business process and right, both through technology and simply through observation and recommendations about, in ways we can make things work better, right? And so I think it's a primarily a forward-looking position, you know, one that is charged with ensuring, you know, collaboration and, as I've said a couple of times, cross-departmental cooperation around major initiatives or just how to fix things that aren't working, frankly. Lisa has been at the table with myself, Acting Director Hornstein and Mary Gani, a lot to talk about ways we can utilize new tools that were created over the past year within the Department of Public Works that had not yet been road-tested before, so to speak, in snow response so that we were in a position to improve performance week over week in the two storms we've seen thus far. I would hate to make this whole conversation about snow because I know we have a lot of work yet to do, but I just wanted to, again, that was, that's the nature of the kind of work that's being done there. So again, the directors, I want to stress this, as I stressed earlier, that they will continue to have a direct line of communication with the mayor. They'll also be running their departments. They'll also be running their departments, right? But they will have support from the two positions in the Division of Management to, you know, to connect to other resources outside of their department or within OMB or within the mayor's office to ensure that while they are sort of focused on the daily work of, you know, running those large and complicated operations, that they have help in skidding their heads above the weeds occasionally and, you know, seeing the forest of the trees in order to, you know, keep the ball moving forward in improving process. I'm sorry, I don't mean to cut you off, but I would say the same for the Chief Economic Development Officer as well, frankly. You know, there are functional distinctions, but the roles are the same. How can we continue to make this, the operation of the city as a whole work better? How can we, you know, convene the right teams from within the departments to tap their expertise? And, you know, how can we focus on the key policy objectives of the mayor and on a successful implementation of the directives sent to us by council through legislation?
Have other members had an opportunity? I feel like I'm capitalizing. I have a couple more questions, but I feel like I'm monopolizing, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop for now. But I know I have a couple more questions, and I don't know if Councilwoman Gross or Strasburger or, okay, yeah. Okay, good.
Thank you. I was about ready.
Councilman Kalkin.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. And Jake, good to, I feel like I haven't talked to you for like 20 minutes already. So, you know, and I say that jokingly because, you know, I want this council to know through this past storm the seriousness that this administration took this storm and how they dove into it with me. And Jake and I were on the phone at least a dozen times, I would say, over the last days, identifying the problems, just, you know, reaching out. We both were kind of beat up. Called me Sunday morning or Monday morning, I think at seven o'clock, said, what are you hearing? And I was like, not my alarm yet. So, you know. But, you know, Jake, I just wanted to take this opportunity to publicly thank you for, you know, how attentive you were through that storm, you know. Honestly, I am very confident, even though we have a long way to go with Public Works, very confident in the future, specifically because of this administration and how they just jumped in here. And even before the mayor jumped in the snow pile truck, he was down at the divisions, you know, kind of giving them a pep talk and telling them how important they are to the city. So I just really wanted to take that opportunity to thank you publicly, Jake. You know, I think this is going to be a positive for us in the end. It's hard to believe right now, but I have confidence in that. And as far as, you know, what this meeting is about today, I tend to, you know, you're the new administration. If this is how you feel, you know, you needed to switch things around and do things, you got my full confidence. So I have a meeting at 2:30. Can I register and I vote now? Is that?
No, no, it's not on the agenda till Tuesday.
Okay, it's not on the agenda for Tuesday. So you'll have my full confidence in this, as you did through the snowstorm. Keep up the good work, you know. Very impressed so far in our first week that we've been thrown together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, councilman. It's been a pleasure working with you, even under adverse conditions the past few days as well. And I'm looking forward to continuing that collaboration with you and all your colleagues.
Thank you. And Councilman Wilson.
Thank you, Madam President. And hi, Jake. Good to see you again. I just had a couple of questions about the work chart here, mainly just about the notes that you have. Maybe I missed it because I showed up a little late. You have the, I understand how it's split up now with the two divisions. The Deputy Director says proposed. Is that already something that's been sent over or is that already?
Yes. Yes, councilman, that proposal was sent over in the same package of legislation as the measure that was preliminarily approved this morning.
Oh, you're referring to the proposed legislation. I understand. Not a proposed person or?
No, the legislation producing that position has been proposed but not approved, which is why I just noted that to say that, obviously, until council approves that legislation, we can't act on that. And I said it that way to differentiate from, example, the note behind my name as director, which is nominated, and the note behind Assistant Director of CDBG, which is already budgeted, already approved by council, and so it was just a hiring process.
Okay, great. Yeah, that was my misunderstanding. I guess I just didn't want to make sure I didn't miss a name.
No, you did not.
You know, or someone that's been put over. Also, maybe I don't understand the note here, the non-applicable one for the Division of Management.
Yeah, the Division of Management, at least as we're proposing it at this time, is a functional group, but it wouldn't have a counterpart Deputy Director. The two chiefs that we were moving from the mayor's office would sort of co-lead that division and be, you know, its primary staff, frankly. That's the Chief Operations and Administrative Officer and the Chief Economic Development Officer. So I'm showing Division of Management there to give a sense of the organizational structure, but noting that we are now proposing a position, a new position there, just moving two positions that currently exist into this structure.
Okay, you'll be directly overseeing operations and the planning part. I understand.
Yes, if that's, I could produce another version of this that makes that a little?
No, that's helpful. I just wanted to, yeah, just want to clarify some of the notes that I saw. Okay, and so, you know, I just want to, you know, get this out there. So, you know, if we're troubleshooting something or something, you know, really needs a direct attention at a high level, you're the person to go to for operations.
Myself and Chief Frank, yes, would be working together on that. But you can begin the conversation with me and we'll move it through the process from there. Absolutely.
Okay, yeah, I'm just eager to start working together, especially whenever we start working across issues across different departments, different directors that I've been working with on different projects. So looking forward to that. I just had a couple of questions, just things I'm looking to talk about in the year to come, which is, you know, just our financial situation, which Councilman Kraus alluded to. And just, you know, in terms of the bond rating and how will, you know, your thoughts on any of those answers now, but just, you know, as we move forward, like how we'll be able to keep that, maintain that and also improve upon that as we move forward. And also just the budget process, since you'll be overseeing these two divisions. You know, we saw in the times of COVID and more that the public, that there is, you know, a public interest to be, the desire to be more engaged with the budget process. And so even though the previous administration has done, from my understanding, I wasn't here for 15 years, but from my understanding is that there has been so much more transparency around the budgetary process. And I'm just curious, as we move forward, like how you'll continue to improve on that and engage the public the way you see fit and, you know, how you'll respond to that, to that need. I really don't have anything else. I mean, I wanted to just, you know, ask you a couple of these basic questions, but really just looking forward to getting to work and stop, you know, talking and doing, you know. I mean, me too, you know, just, I just want to, I just want to get down the brass tacks. And I got, let's see, all these projects out there from, you know, I heard about a project manager that's not, that left the city, and so I want to like revisit that, like I could just go through my laundry list and I am, I'm going to make an appointment so we can go through that. And I believe that you and I will work very closely together and all that and make sure it's working and running well. So I appreciate you being at the city and I look forward to working together.
Thanks, councilman. And if I just quickly say on your, the two subject areas, and there'll be plenty of time to discuss it in much further detail. But with regard to the sort of financial standing of the city, I think I would note that, as I said earlier, the biggest X factor there is, of course, you know, revenues and whether or not the pandemic, you know, continues to impact them or in what way. You know, based on current forecasts, you know, we're expecting strong revenues and, you know, a sound financial position with a secure, you know, reserve fund balance and operating result at the end of this year. But changes in, you know, things like employment taxes receipts or other economic impacts of the ongoing pandemic can threaten that. I think there are valuable safeguards in place, as I was discussing, or we were discussing in response to Councilman Kraus's question, that we're in well-positioned to weather that storm, but we need to continually be mindful of it. And we have strong reason to believe that the bond rating improvements that we've seen in the past will, you know, be preserved and continue that trajectory. Regarding the budget process, again, I agree, you know, there are, there is a growing desire within the public to be engaged and perhaps engaged in new ways about this process. I completely agree with you that the city has made enormous leaps forward in the past decade as it relates to transparency of the budget. But there are always new technologies, new emerging, you know, areas of practice within the community engagement space that we should continually be keeping up on and understanding and learning from the examples of peer cities and how to continually improve that process. Because it is, you know, as we've talked about a few times today, one of our democratic obligations in municipal government. I've had some preliminary conversations about that with the internal teams at OMB who have a number of really interesting and exciting ideas about that and was able to facilitate a conversation between them and the mayor about some of those new ideas too, to just begin developing some proposals there. I don't have anything fully baked, if you will, to bring to council in the short term, but it is an area of early focus.
Okay, great. Yeah, yeah, just something I'm looking forward to talking through throughout the. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, councilman. And Councilwoman Strasburger, and then Councilwoman Gross, if you have anything after that. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Welcome back. And I want to echo what a lot of my colleagues have already expressed, just appreciation for your ongoing communication with council members, really prioritizing keeping us up to date through the snowstorm. But I think that's just indicative of kind of your style of wanting to keep an open line of communication. And I think we share that desire to do so with you and your office. I have had the pleasure of working with you in several capacities. When you were Chief of Staff to then Senator Matt Smith, when you were in government relations positions at the URA and at PWUSA. And in all of those positions, it's just been very apparent that you are incredibly adept at whatever role that you play, that you are able to very quickly, you know, come up to speed and able to fully represent the organization that you're, or the office that you're working for. Not everyone in the public has the opportunity to, like we do, to kind of review your resume, or maybe if they do, they haven't looked at it yet, and to see that some of your background. One question I wanted to ask for our benefit, for the public's benefit, is your management experience. Can you talk a little bit about your management experience throughout your, you know, your career and how you'll apply that to this position?
Sure. Thanks. Thanks for that question, councilperson. I have, you know, over the course of my career, managed both offices and organizations of various sizes and with, you know, various budgets and staff capacities. This, of course, will be the largest of those and a challenge for sure, but one that I think I'm prepared for. I've managed a nonprofit foundation that makes grants in the democracy advancement space, which had rather complicated financial operations in order to, you know, execute on that mission. As you mentioned, I've managed teams of various sizes and both, you know, indirect or collaborative ways, right? So in my work at PWUSA, I managed a team in the public affairs shop in the URA. My charge was more and similar to some of the aspects of this work. You know, not so much managing a large team directly, but fostering collaboration and cooperation across the internal divisions within the URA to further policy and planning objectives. Of course, as you mentioned, I was the Chief of Staff to a state senator and managed the entire staff there. So I think, you know, they run the gamut in sort of size and shape and complexity, but have extensive management experience with various types of public sector organizations or civic organizations, managing both people and budgets to that end. I will say that I think I will benefit greatly in this position from the extremely strong team within the existing Office of Management and Budget and the great work that my last several predecessors have done in, you know, professionalizing and building, you know, strong processes and work culture within that office. And so I'm just very excited to be leading such a capable team.
Great, thank you. I don't have any other questions. I, you know, my colleagues have, council colleagues have covered a lot of it. And I too look forward to getting the opportunity to sit down for a longer meeting, going over some of, you know, priorities or kind of my view from council and where we can continue to work together and building off of what the work we've already done and also to what Councilman Wilson brought up earlier as well. So lots of ideas and happy to share them with you when the time is right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And Councilwoman Gross, did you have anything?
Yes, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
So welcome. I'm going to say almost Director Pollock now. I'm not sure what your official title will be. Or Director Nominee Pollock. And as others have said, thank you for already serving and for your diligence and attention during our snowfall in the last, almost week or so. It was also, I have to say, also really helpful to get the phone calls and the updates and even for, you know, the invitation for feedback, which is also welcome. And just like the other members, I had the pleasure of working with you in your other government roles especially. And I also think that those roles have, you know, led you to this one. I found, I think other members have said similar things, that working with you as the URA government representative, so that you were our first point of contact to the URA, was a probably positive turning point for my relationship with the URA, right? So I've been an outspoken critic at times, and it was a turning point maybe for the organization as well. But it was helpful for me to be able to get questions answered and to get an immediate response. And that was fulsome, right? It's a word that Councilman Kraus often uses and I think is appropriate here. And similarly, at PWUSA, even though it was while I served on the board, for my office to have a point of contact in your role and your department there as you can filled out the, I think, strengthened the public affairs aspects at PWUSA. It made PDBO a better organization. And I think that it was not just that you were there, but that you, in my experience, were so respectful to council's rightful role, that it made the organization stronger at PWUSA. Because that hasn't always been true for city council vis-à-vis PWUSA or city council vis-à-vis the URA. There have been other moments when those relationships between the bodies were not a strong relationship, even a hostile relationship. And I found that having you in those roles allowed us to work better together. And so I think that this is a great position for you to be in because it hopefully will help us create what we've all been talking about, which is that creating a stronger partnership between city council and the mayor's side. And that is the goal. So I'm looking forward to seeing how your being in a specific position, you know, leads to that outcome. And since I was sitting now for, it's been almost an hour, listening to my questions from the other members, I won't repeat some of those. But I had the opportunity to go back and look at previous budgets in the city of Pittsburgh, because it's all very nicely arranged. If you're sitting at home and the public, you can go to the city's website and you can go to the Office of Management and Budget. And I currently got 1985's budget up on my screen. And I also looked at, I also looked at the last year of Mayor Ravenstall's administration, 2013, because I was sworn in a month before Mayor Paduto. So I was sworn in in December of 2013, and I sat next to Mayor Paduto during those budget discussions. So I was sworn in in December of twenty thirteen and I sat next to Mayor Paduto during those budget discussions or Councilman Paduto during his budget discussions. And so I kind of remember the changes that the new Mayor Paduto made. And I looked back to the last year of the Ravenstall administration and there was no Office of Management and Budget. So while other members here have served much longer than I have, I'm eight years now. I do just want to kind of emphasize that this is a normal thing for a different administration to try to arrange these functions differently. I know other members have said the same thing here. But if you go back twenty years or thirty, it's almost forty years what I have up now. And it's, there was like a Department of Administration on its own. And there were years where, you know, there was like a budget officer who was hourly. So there's tremendous different ways of organizing the functions of government. And what it looks like is that sometimes things were almost, they're turned inside out if you go far enough back, where inside of each department, they kind of had their own budget functions. And so we've, you know, are now in a, a place where we've, we've taken those outs from under directors and kind of grouped the budget functions all together. And I really want to say that was a change that kind of happened over this last eight years. And so this is consolidating both, not just the budgeting, but also the administration and management in this office too. So I just wanted to kind of just say that again, because it is a different model than twenty, thirty, forty years ago, certainly. But it's one that we've, I think, gotten comfortable to at City Council. That there is, I think you can, you can just eyeball the actual budget documents and it lends credence and it justifies the Office of Management and Budget, I think, being in existence. Because certainly the budget documents themselves to kind of echo back to what Councilman Wilson was just getting at, or maybe Councilwoman Strasburger about participatory budgeting. It's a better document these days than it was if you look back at the, you know, type written copies, not just about the graphics and the layouts, but the amount of information is really much, I think, there's much more information in today's budgets. And it's much easier and inviting for the citizen to be able to see how government is working. So I just, I wanted to, to call people's attention to that. And I think it echoes what other members have been asking, like, well, how is, how is Gina Command going to flow? How are decisions going to be made? And the, while I think your, your chart that you put up says it plainly, I mean, that the responsibility is still a direct line to the mayor. But different, different mayors organize the actual, like day-to-day communications differently. And so I'm comfortable with, you know, supporting not just your nomination, but also the legislation that we voted provisionally changing, the amendment that we voted provisionally kind of changing and rearranging those functions on the org chart. And there wasn't a question there yet. I feel like I should give you a question. So if I were to ask you a question, it would be this. One of the things that jumps out to me is that I don't recall seeing a treasurer in a finance. And so part of my point about rearranging those functions is that it used to be, if you go back far enough, that receivables and payables were all in the same department. And this is kind of a big deal because now they are very clearly separated. Budget is about not just the administration of the, you know, oversight of the departments, but their, their payables. Right? And how the budget kind of is part of the structure, but also how checks get cut. Whereas it, all the revenue streams are handled out of the finance department. And I maybe wanted to give you a chance to speak to that. And I, I didn't see a treasurer. Do we have to have a treasurer and is it there?
So it's a great question, Councilwoman.
Be a question for this actual interview, but.
Well, I can, I can address it pretty quickly at least. And then if there are follow-up questions that we want to table for another time, happy to discuss those as well. The, the, first of all, there, there is nothing proposed in this set of actions that the administration has placed before council that would change that relationship between the finance department and the Office of Management and Budget. So, you know, we are not proposing any reduction in the roles or responsibilities of finance in managing the collection of revenue or in the rather separate, but also within that department, management of the real estate disposition process. So the, or the real estate inventory. So, so no proposed changes there. You are correct about the, the broad strokes of that functional relationship, finance money in, O M B money out. And then there's shared responsibility as it relates to debt issuance and, and, you know, the management of the city's debt service and borrowings through the capital budgeting process. And I've been working closely with Acting Director Ghula and members of the Capitol team on coordinating around that the past few weeks. To your question about the position of treasurer, I don't recall precisely when I, so forgive me. I don't remember whether it was in which of the last, say, three budgets it was. But the, the distinction between the position of treasurer and finance director was eliminated. Code permits either configuration, and in fact, there is a specific provision within code that says that one person can wear both hats or they can be separate. They're have at different times during different administrations and even at different points within a given administration, periods where there is a finance director leading the department and a treasurer as the number two or, or just one position presently, the structure provides for one position that serves both functions. So the term finance director and treasurer are used interchangeably for legal purposes.
That's a question. It was excellent answer. Thank you for that clarity. Madam Chair, I don't think I have any other questions. Thank you, Mr. Pollock. And I look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Councilman Cross, if I may. Jake, thanks for sticking around just a little bit longer. I won't belabor much longer, but a question did come up while we were having discussion and response by different members, something I believe that every council district wrestles with. And I'd just be curious briefly to, to understand your take on it. And that would be vacant property management. Our phones ring off the hook consistently for every year that I've been here. You know, the city is downsized. We know the population loss, so forth and so on, that what is left behind in terms of vacant property. Our desire to manage it, the difficulty in clearing titles, dead end properties, properties that need to be demolished, the cost of demolishing a property so forth and so on. That, that is a meeting in and of itself. So just to introduce the topic to you and the importance of it to this council in terms of our responsibility to manage our vacant properties. I'm just curious what your thoughts might be, some initial offering that you might have is how you might approach it.
So I think, I think there are numerous levers that we can move and really all of which need to be adjusted to some degree to, to achieve that objective. You know, one of which is reorganizing somewhat internally where the, you know, the frontline sort of maintenance function sits within the Department of Public Works and Councilman, we had an opportunity in the course of discussing a project update on the Fourth Division earlier today to discuss a bit about what's being explored there in terms of, you know, a, a plan for improving response to the clean and lean process. Now, you know, once we've got some operational efficiencies achieved from reopening the Fourth Division facility, that's one. Certainly improvements, investment really in better processes and procedures and some of that process improvement work that I was discussing earlier. Then the real estate division in finance, you know, to maybe expedite the process or updates and things. Although much of that, as you've alluded to, is dependent on the courts. And so finally, another major way in which we can influence that process is through pursuing state legislation, which has already been introduced by State Senator Wayne Fontana in cooperation with the U R A to improve process there. Give us more expedited court process than in conjunction with the land bank can resolve some of those issues. It's not an easy fix. I've just given you the highlights as to the sort of options that are on the table. And I think we need, as you've said, to come together with a concrete plan about that. But we've got some irons in the fire, so to speak.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I don't, not to oversimplify, but neighborhoods that, neighborhoods that appear as though no one cares about them, then get treated as though no one cares about them. Right? And it just compounds the problem and it just becomes that, you know, that secular existence and it's so very difficult to, to stop it. One of the things that I, I was impressed about in now Mayor Ganey's campaign was his desire to see this be a clean city. And one of my, not just a clean city, but the cleanest city. And one of my first official roles, really back in the Murphy administration, was to be appointed chair of the Clean Pittsburgh Commission when it was first formed. And that goes back, I don't even know how many, many years, but it has always been a very deep desire of me and I believe every member of this council to present our city in the best light that we possibly can. And to get ahead of, of those who don't want to see that vision come to fruition, you know? And, and, and I can tell you each and every one of our offices wrestle with these calls every day. And there, there, there's, there, we would think they would be simple, but they're not. And every call comes around either vacant property management, landlord management, which thank God that rental registry appears to be launching after fifteen years of diligent work to see that come to be. But that vacant property and waste management, you know? And you would think waste management would be the simplest thing in the world to deal with. And yet it is one of the most complicated problems that were, were dealt every single day on almost every single phone call. So I appreciate your, your willingness to at least, you know, stick your toe in the water because this is something that is very near and dear to my heart, the council's heart. And, and we very much want to work very closely with the new administration in achieving the goal of this being the cleanest city.
Thank you, Councilman. And your, your summation there reminds me of a point I didn't make. I, I spoke mostly about the maintenance of lots, which is of course important. But, but equally important is the work going on in environmental services around, you know, litter and dumping enforcement and cleanup. And, and there are exciting new initiatives being developed there or that have been developed there that are, that are really getting their legs under them that I think we're excited about. And while on the topic of environmental services, I would be remiss if I just didn't share with council, for those who haven't heard this already, that even while facing some still adverse conditions as related to snow yesterday, I'm very proud to say that the Division of Environmental Services was able to service all of their routes yesterday, except for two, which is a remarkable sign about their tenacity in garbage pickup. But also I think a sign that, you know, about conditions, so. Give them a quick shout out while I was thinking of them.
They are, I apologize for interrupting you. They are an amazing operation, amazing, one of the finest departments in the city with a commitment to professionalism unlike anything I've ever seen. I, I had the opportunity to chair the Public Works Committee when I first came on, spent some time going into environmental services to meet with them. And I, I'm telling you, just the, the, the consummate professionalism with that department just blew me away. Really just fine, fine workers. One other thing I would like to, and I promise I'm going to stop, just to take it one steps further under the lead of Councilwoman Strasburger, the plastic ban. We even hate to call it a ban, but the, the reimagining of how we use single-use plastics and the importance of understanding how to, to do that. I truly believe the only way we ever get ahead of the waste management problem is, is really through reduction, right? The first step has to be reduction. The second step has to be reuse or reimagine. The third step then is recycle, right? And, and I applaud Councilwoman Strasburger and the forward thinking of, of those who wish to, to have us lead with the, with the mantra of reduction, right? We've got to find a way to reduce single use and not just imagine ways to get out there and pick it up before it goes over a hillside. I'm off in the soapbox, I promise.
One of the, no, one of the key principles of process improvement, right, is to follow the, the problem upstream, right? And so I completely agree.
Thanks, Jake. Thank you for being here. Thanks, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Yes, Jake. Thank you for your willingness to serve. I believe very much in a servant model. We are servants of God. We are servants of God's people. And we've been given this stewardship role of overseeing their government. And so I believe in that very much. It's core to who I am and what I believe. I want to say one question, I want to do first, I'll start off, let me know, let me do it backwards. So as I've said, whenever anyone who listen, but from my religious background, I believe God sends messengers to earth, to signs and wonders for his people. And I believe perhaps that the election of Ed Ganey is providentialist. God moment assigned to bring hope to his people. I believe that. And I believe that being the first African mayor of the city is incredibly difficult. And so in order to be successful, he will have to surround himself with high-quality people. And so we hope as a council, we believe, and I think I speak on behalf of all the council, we believe in a strong mayor and that a strong mayor and a strong council will make a stronger government. When I first in two thousand seventeen began to talk about a city for all and the city for all agenda, I was on a soapbox sort of saying that, that we ought to be a city for all. And I'm somewhat grateful that all the previous mayors picked up on that theme. And first, first, actually, it was Dan Gilman and then Mayor Paduto and now Ed Ganey. And when I started that city for all theme though, what it really meant was that in order to become a city for all, we had to disproportionately invest in those places that had not been invested in, in those places who had been forgotten. Sure.
I'm here, Michael and Bruce.
I'm sorry. One of the best things I ever heard, and I can't remember exactly where I heard it. Maybe it was something that you said, but equals not equitable.
That's exactly right. Yes. And that, that was what we were, that has been our, our goal. And so we look to, we, we, we hope to work with you. Along with Mr. Kraus, we are the old man on council, right? I think my job is to do two things. One is to serve. Council sometimes asks me to help it and I will. And if to extent the mayor asks me to help, I will. Sometimes council is useful and we tend to try to, we're like my, my son, like Thomas the Tank Engine, right? And we try to be a useful engine. I think the other role that Mr. Kraus and I, the other role that we are, we're witnesses. We are sort of the, the, the storehouse of information, at least while we've been here, right? We, we're, you know, we're, it was Doug and Bill for many years and now it's us. We are the sort of the witnesses of what God has done over the fifteen years we've been here and how we have, at least the reason why we have moved, where we've moved in public safety and how we've moved in affordable housing and, and then with Mr. Lavelle's partnership, all of the things that we've done sort of as a team on council. And so we hope to work with you and to the extent you're interested, we'll share our expertise. And to you allow us to, we'll partner with you and be active as active as you will allow us to be. I do have, so, 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 so I already have, only have my questions are pedantic or little things. Most of our conversations we've already had in, in private. So the, the one thing though, I do think I, I want to at least suggest. And I'm really grateful for the organizational chart because even though talking to you, it wasn't clear to me as to how we were organizing government. So the chart does really help provide a visual. And I was talking to really my staff about this actually last night. And you mentioned it this morning and I think I talked to the president about this. And we'll talk, we don't have to answer it today online, but even though O M B has an overarching role now, it's still a department in terms of our city code. And so if you're taking people out of the mayor's office and putting them in underneath a department, regardless of what title they are, they're essentially directors, assistant directors. That's the functions, the function, whether you. Directors, assistant directors, that's the functions, the function, whether you call them that or not, whatever you call them. Call them chiefs, but that's really in the organizational chart, if they're under a director now, that's what they are. They're deputy directors, assistant directors. And so, um, I think, and that's something that the president and I, I think that, uh, whether or not we do or not, I think that will now subject them. Um, to council interview if council so chooses. And I want you to get your thoughts on it. That's sort of my thoughts, having looked at it last night and, and, you know, because in, and centrally. We are actually creating a new job for them. They are, they are no longer, when they move, just like if I'm, if I'm the, if I'm the secretary of public works, right? And I transfer and become the secretary in, um, law department. E- e- even though I'm still a secretary, I'm literally in a new job. And if we're going to move them from mayor's office, even though they may function the same, they may even be in the same space logically. But in terms of the structure of government, we're, we're literally moving them from one job to another job. And, and so I, I, that's what I think, I'm, I don't know that we've, but we can talk about that offline, but that's kind of my thinking. Uh, again, and a reason, and, and I, and I, and I've said this over and over again, the reason that I, I, maybe even before I asked the question, I probably should say this. I believe the mayor should have great latitude on who he hires. That's really not my issue. But at the same time, in order for me to be effective as a council person, I need to have a relationship with those, those, those deputy directors. So because those are the people who actually do the things we need done. And so, um, so my question is, as you move them, you know, and especially the two, I think, the operations person and the planning person. Um, what's your view about perhaps if council, we don't know if you want to or not, but you, what's your sense of whether or not they may be, um, available for council interview and conversation?
Yeah, um, I, I, I would like to, apologies, this, uh, I would like to, well, I guess I'll first say that I, you know, speaking, um, myself as the, uh, director designate. And then if these changes are approved, you know, their supervisor, I would, would always encourage us to stay, uh, strong and open relationship with council and that kind of collaboration. And, and, uh, so have no objection in that regard. Uh, you know, I think this was in response to a, a question that councilperson Strasburger asked this morning. Um, you know, that, that, uh, crosswalking, right? That migration of the positions, um, against the legislation that council passed at the end of last year. I, I, I haven't seen, you know, kind of a legal opinion on that, I suppose, but, but no, uh, full willingness on our part to comply with the interview process. Um, if desired by council and, you know, as warranted, um, as we move those positions.
Hey, thank you. Um, I think that's it for me. Um, um, last thing is. My prayers are with you. I have. Over the last two administrations, developed both friendships. Close friendships with the former chiefs of staffs. I, um, and regardless of what title we're calling you. Um, the bulk of the chief of staff's responsibility, you are now inheriting. And I know what that means intimately. And you have young children. And so, um, I, I just want you to know that you will be daily in my prayers. It is managing a billion-dollar organization. When you take the city and all of its authorities and the workforce and the personnel issues. And the press issues and the constituents' issues and the interpersonal relationship issues. When you put all that together on this giant we call city government. Um, is enough to hurt four or five people, let alone one young man. And so I do want you to know on a private note, and I mean that when I say this, as I pray for our mayor. Uh, we do that in church every Sunday. Um, have been for a while, um, I will add you, because I think this job that you're now attempting to do. Is challenging and, and difficult in the best of circumstances, perhaps almost impossible. In the worst of circumstances that COVID has put us in. And so on a personal note, you are in my prayers.
Reverend, I really appreciate, uh, that and that, that your prayers and the prayers of your, the congregation. And I, just going back to your original, um, observation, I just wanted to say that, uh, the Ganey administration and myself included is certainly very much committed to the same. Uh, type of servant leadership, um, that you described very eloquently earlier. Um, that has been, you know, my life's work, um, and the mayor's and, and most of members of our team in one way, shape or form. And, uh, certainly a standard that we hold ourselves to.
Thank you. I do have one just quick question. And that is in your new role as director of O, of O M B, when the mayor is away, you will also be designated as the deputy mayor, correct?
Yes, that's the mayor's intention. That's correct.
Thank you. Um, your, your approval will come before council on Tuesday, which I fully expect a unanimous vote and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you all very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members. Great to spend this time with you today.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those favors, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.